San Mateo has a much larger industrial base than Mill Valley. So therefore during difficult times, basic aid districts that have a larger industrial base are going to be more susceptible to having problems than, for example, Mill Valley, which really has a very small industrial base and really not existent, a pretty much industrial base, and therefore they're going to be more stable during difficult times. So what happens in one community might be different than what happens in another community, even though both communities have basic aid. So I think, and I slightly disagree with Leslie that about this 10%, unless it's changed in the last year or so, because it was always mentioned as 9%, and I would say, I would keep it at 9%, and I believe that the rest of it is a possibility of being used.
The next question will be answered first by Clifford. Again, there are two questions that are related. First of all, in general, how would you deal with conflicts between stakeholders? And in particular, since you'll be a public servant, will you take the public side when there's a conflict between the district and the public?
I just agree with the premise of the question. Part of what I've always done when I've served on the boards and commissions and the city council I've been on, is that if it's a four to one vote, and I'm the one that didn't get my way, like in Mill Valley, when I was on this city council, we had seven people on the planning commission, and the council voted to put it down to five. You know, I said, "Keep it at seven, like more survives on what goes on," but I lost. And I was kind of angry about that loss. So I go in, and if I want to better, you know, I went into the city manager's office and kind of got everything off my chest. Because if there's a vote that I disagree with, we are a team, you know, we are the school board, we're not like, and you'll see this, that even though I might not agree with a board decision, if that's the board's decision, I will do my best to articulate what the board's view was going forward. Because hey, you know, it's fun being an activist. I mean, poor Ken, I've been an activist on this city council ever, I mean, a community activist ever since I've been off this city council, and I kind of drive the council nuts, you know, from like webcasting, or noise ordinances, or things like that. And so, but that's not what being on a board is, it's the other way around.
Well, in response to that, there's nothing that dictates that a board member always has to vote with the majority. There are times when there's two points of view, and there might be two very strong points of view, and I certainly would not hesitate to vote against the majority. I agree it's a team, but there are going to be moments possibly that the board does not vote five to zero, and I would feel very comfortable with that, as long as I believe in whatever the issue was. I thought that the question had to do with more the community feelings than the board feelings, but on that subject, we are elected by the community, therefore I would be very responsive to the feelings of the community, and if there was a formal meeting like this, and the community had, and the audience had overwhelmingly strong opinion on a particular issue, and the percentages were quite high in that direction, I would think that I should, as a board member, be responsive to that.
Leslie?
Well, I guess I have never really looked at it as a kind of them versus us position. I have sat at Mill Valley School District Board meetings for 20 years. Years ago, as PTA president, we were required to do so, so we went to every one of those meetings, and then they were twice a month, and often went past midnight. So, and I never thought of it as them versus me as the public. I thought we were all together. I respected all of those people. We have at least a couple of those people here in the audience tonight who served on those boards. And this is a volunteer position. We are them, and they are us, and I think that's something to keep in mind. At the same time, I promise anyone who votes for me that I will vote my heart, I will vote my head, and I will listen to each item that's brought up, and I also would have no qualms about being a lone vote, if that's what I felt was required, if that's what my head and my heart told me I needed to do. However, once a decision is made, then I am part of the Mill Valley School District Board, and I would go forward as a team member, and uphold, I would never badmouth my other board members after a decision is made. I think that's just not a way to work as a team, and I have never done that, and I don't plan to do it now, so that would be my response.
Bob will be the first to answer the next question. Every school board member is assigned to one or more of the schools in Mill Valley. How will you make yourself known to the school community to which you've been assigned? How will you educate the members of that school community about what you are doing as a school board member?
This is one of the things that I really look forward to if I get elected to the school board. I have always, I think I said this in my introductory comments, that I always have spent a lot of time with students, with meetings, and education. So the first, one of the first things that I will do is I will start making myself known to the elementary schools. Certainly, they know me at middle school, there's nothing that I have to really do over there. But I do not know the elementary schools quite as well, and so I'm going to go there. I'm going to, whatever is possible that a school board member can do, I don't want to be intimidating, walking to classrooms if they don't want me to walk into classrooms, but I would like to walk into classrooms personally, and I would like to know what's going on there, I'd like to know what their programs are, I'd like to know what their activities are. And the second part of that question was the end of that question.
How would you educate the members of the school community, of that school community, about what you're doing as a school board member?
Well, I would like to, something which is not done, and I'd like to see this done, is I'd like to see the school board members occasionally, and I don't know what the definition of occasionally is right now, but I would like to have them be able to go to a teacher's meeting, and either observe a teacher's meeting for part of the meeting, or to maybe answer questions. I know that this is very controversial, but I would certainly be willing to do it. I'd like to do the same thing with PTSA meetings. So number one, I'd like to go to teacher meetings, and number two, I'd like to go to PTSA meetings, and try to let them know what my interests are, what my philosophies are, what I'm trying to do, or what we're trying to do as a school board.
Leslie?
Well, I can't wait to get a school buddy. I am thinking about going to all those coffee cards, back to school nights, house, all of the things that I haven't been able to do for a few years with small children. Making new friends of the staff at schools that I didn't know, and seeing old friends at the schools that I do know. So I think it's going to be really important to accept every invitation from my school to come to every event. I would want to be very mindful of when it's appropriate for me to be on a school campus and when it's not. So I think that's some, I would probably need some direction as a new school board member as to kind of the protocols for that, and I would look to our superintendent for that, and our school board. And as far as educating myself, I think that's beyond just going to the meetings and going to schools. I know there's different commissions and groups that you can be part of once you're on the school board, and I would hope that I would be involved in things that would really interest me. I would educate myself as much as possible about each of the schools. I already am reading all their newsletters online, it's really fabulous, we didn't have that back in the dark ages. So I can actually look at each and every school's newsletter and figure out what's going on, and I'm really looking forward to that. As to how I would educate them, I think part of that would be when I am there on site, if I go to a PTA meeting, if I am asked to come to an event, that is where I would educate them about what I'm doing. And I would certainly welcome them and encourage them to come to the board meetings, because goodness knows I'm there often, frequently, just lately, and there aren't very many people there. So I would encourage all of those school community peoples to please come to our school board meetings and hear what's going on. Thank you.
Clifford?
Bob, where you could go, it was about 1:00 at Park School, and I was going to go meet with one of the teachers there to talk about school board stuff. And it was kind of amazing, because you're supposed to sign in before you go into the schools, and I went to sign in, and I walked through the schools, and having an adult walking through the school where nobody knows who they are, even I felt kind of creepy walking through there, painting or something. So the first thing I would do is coordinate with the principal of the school. I would assume that the principal of the school is already coordinating with the superintendent, and work with the principal to figure out how to interact with the PTA, and the site councils, and the teachers, and the classified staff, it takes a village group, and try to balance my time so it's effective for everybody involved there. So in some ways, I would have a meeting with the principal before I'd go in, out of the schools, and kind of have a game plan going in. Otherwise, it's just a glad-hand schmooze fest, and those people are there at school to do a job to educate our children, so there's plenty of other opportunities to do that, but when you're on the school grounds, it's sacred area.
Okay, Leslie will be the first to answer the next question. Who will you look to for advice and guidance regarding curriculum and instruction?
I would look to my superintendent for advice. I would look to my fellow school board members to get historical perspective. I have been in the district for 20 years, so I do have some long historical perspective and some insight into what has happened historically, but certainly not the last year or two. So I would look to staff, I would look to the current school board, I would look to previous school board members, I'd look to the principals, and probably most importantly, I would look to our superintendent for direction.
Clifford?
I would first go to the superintendent, and I would also ask for their offices' guidance. I'd probably go on the internet too, to just see what best practices are going on in other places. I would want to be involved with, I think it's called J-Lab or something, it's where all the other school board members get together in a monthly meeting. And I would ask very open-ended questions and just learn what people have to say, but I mean, I'm a heck of a nice guy, and I'll be a great school board member, but I'm not an education professional at all, and I got to remind myself of that, so I'll be talking.
A similar answer, I would talk to the superintendent. I think as a school board member, I talk to the superintendent first, and then get guidance from the superintendent. I do have a lot of experience, obviously, in education. I would like to talk to the principal, and then I would also like to very much talk to teachers, since, you know, guess what, they're at the classroom, and especially experienced teachers sure understand what goes on in Mill Valley. I do have a concern about this, and this is something that should be discussed real soon, is what happens when a teacher, and this has to do with curriculum, I'm not on the subject here, but what happens when a teacher retires like myself? What happens when a teacher leaves for various reasons? And then you replace that teacher, you have a new teacher, and is that teacher getting guidance? And the answer is pretty much no. Yeah, in the past at the middle school. I know that in my entire career, I never got guidance. As a student-teacher, I had zero guidance. In my first year teaching, I had zero guidance. I was on my own. Somehow, I survived. I'd like to go back in video, I'd like to take myself, and figure out how I did survive. But, you know, looking back at it now, maybe it was a good thing for me, but I don't think it's a good thing for most teachers. And teachers that are hired, I am sure are very competent teachers, however, do they really know what the curriculum is of Mill Valley? Have they come from a school which is, for example, socio-economically completely different from Mill Valley? And if that's the case, they need guidance, they need mentoring, and I don't care how tough the budget situation is, there has to be put money aside for experienced teachers to explain the English program, the science program, whatever the program might be in the school.
Okay, Clifford will be the first to answer the next question. How do you view the superintendent's role with the CSJA, MVTA, and the school board?
Miracle worker. It's kind of funny, from the President of the United States to the, you know, to the heads of major corporations, of like a Steve Jobs at Apple, or a Meg Whitman at HP. Anyway, I mean, they hire a person who oversees everything that goes on, and that's what the superintendent is. And I'm not saying superintendent walks on water at all times, but it's important to have that close relationship, because the superintendent needs feedback from us too. Because part of what we always need to avoid is thinking that we do everything right all the time. I look forward to being introspective with the superintendent, and seeing and kind of analyzing what we're doing, and what we could be doing, and what's being done in other places, and it's a bit responsible, but hats off to our current school board, who put a ton of time in to get our new superintendent. Thank you very much, because that's extra time out of your day and everything else, and our new superintendent's a new person, so I think he's cautiously optimistic about going forward, and so that's why I just hope that I don't have to get to the decision where do we have to remove this superintendent, because that's where it gets hard.
Well, I'm going to try and get a vote from the superintendent. I've actually, we've all talked to the superintendent, and the one thing, there was actually a couple of things that impressed me. The one thing that definitely impressed me was that the superintendent has a goal, like the Christmas vacation, of going into every classroom in the district. And with that type of attitude, I think there's going to be an excellent relationship between the superintendent and the MVTA, and that's all that's needed. We need superintendents, we need principals, we need administrators that really have contact with what's going on in the classroom. And so therefore, I just have to compliment you on saying that, on saying that as a goal, because unfortunately, what happens often is administrators get so hung up on meetings. And whether the meetings are important or not is sort of irrelevant in this discussion, because they get so hung up on meetings that they're never near the classroom. And then that's where the divisions start to develop. And so the more that a superintendent, the more that a principal is involved with the daily teaching, I think the better the relationship is going to be between the two parties.
Leslie?
Well, I would agree with Bob just said. I had also heard from several people that Paul's goal was to visit each classroom, and I think that's a really admirable, and I think a wonderful step in moving into a new district. Also, when I met with Paul, I asked him if he had any changes, if he saw anything he wanted to change in our district, and I was really impressed that his answer was, you know, "I've just got here, I'm checking into every, seeing every classroom, meeting all the teachers, meeting my staff, getting to know the culture, and before I do anything." And I think that's really, really important. I think of a principal kind of as an educator, a philosopher, an advocate for the students and for the staff, a confidant, and a father figure to some. I think it is just such a huge role to have, that he has to know so many things about so many people, and so many, so much curriculum, and I really think it's such an important role in our district and in other districts, and I have gotten to know three prior superintendents rather well, and I'm looking forward to knowing Superintendent Johnson as well. So thank you very much.
Okay, the next question will be answered first by Bob. What do you know about the Funding Alliance, and what is your opinion about it?
I know nothing about it.
Leslie?
The Kid-O, I mean, the alliance, I believe, is between Kid-O and the district and the PTAs. It's the alliance that they have made to all share and talk about what they provide for our district. So I believe that's what it is, and I would certainly support the alliance going forward. I worked on the Kid-O board and on PTAs for many years. I was, again, the PTA president at Oldville and Tam High, also a PTA council president, and the 16th district PTA president as well. So I think alliances between all of those stakeholders is valuable for this district, and I certainly wanted to continue.
Clifford?
As a part of my education, I spoke with the current Kid-O chair, and it's kind of like, the Funding Alliance is great, because if you're raising funds, you want to make sure that you're not all going to the same oil, and that, you know, a village has certain funding that they want to raise money for, and the other organizations that are in place, it's kind of a proactive approach, where it kind of makes it so there's no turf wars going forward. And what else I learned in that conversation is that part of what each one of these groups does when they raise money is ask the people what they would fund, what they prefer to fund, and what aren't they more inclined to fund. So each one of the groups kind of has their list of what their constituencies want to contribute to, and also, they don't go after the same businesses, because they kind of know that if each one of these groups hits up the same business for 100 free burritos every week, that, you know, that business can end up saying no. So hats off to groups like the Funding Alliance. Because a lot of times, if things go real smooth, you don't ever hear about it.
Okay, Leslie will be the first to answer this question. Extensive educational research has shown that homework does not improve academic performance in elementary school, and only marginally in middle school. What is your homework policy?
Oh, hi. I have four children, and I have to say that my homework policy was probably quite different with my son, my first son than it is for my youngest, who is eight and a half years younger. Although the good news is, my youngest son is a good student and gets his homework done all the time. You know, I think my homework policy is that homework should be meaningful, and not just busy work. And I think that doesn't necessarily mean that it can't be just problems from, I'll use math, because I think sometimes doing math problems again and again, you actually do learn skills, you learn what you know and what you don't know. But I certainly don't, would not support, I do not support at my house, homework that is simply busy work for the students. And I also think that our children in this district, we have very many activities, and lots of stress put on them to do lots of different things, and I think we all need to be mindful as parents, at some point in the evening when it's getting late and your third grader needs to go to bed, to say, "You're done, you need to go to sleep," because that's what's best for the child, so that the next day when they get up and they go to school, they have enough rest and a good breakfast, and they're going to learn what's in play that day, rather than staying up way too late and not being able to learn the following day. So I think homework in moderation is great, but I have never been a supporter of busy work, and I wouldn't be in the future as well.
Clifford?
I'm kind of afraid of the teachers that tell them what to do. I mean, my first experience, you know, kindergarten-oriented, how do you say? The teacher said, "I am the teacher, you are the parent." You know, "We teach the kids a certain way, don't get ahead of what's going on." And it's like, wow, that's kind of scary, but now, now that I'm a, you know, first grade parent, you know, I'm kind of learning more about what goes on there, and it all comes down to teacher choice. And I'm not going to say that, you know, this one first grade teacher at Park School gives more homework than the other ones, because I'm not, that's not my place to do it. Now, I really respect the experience that the opt tells have gone through with their kids here, because it's very helpful in understanding the bigger picture of what goes on there, but that's, it's just kind of scary to watch the kids at the middle school with their backpacks that kind of look like they're sherpas, carrying, you know, packs up their little lights and everything. But, and again, you know, first grade now, my daughter has a huge backpack, because she likes to bring a lot of stuff to school, so, you know, I mean, again, learning about everything that goes on, and I'm sure that, one of the big aha moments for me is where I have great respect for the teachers, that they're teaching 20 different kids at the same time, and no, and there's not a perfect fit for each kid there, so hats off.
Bob?
Before I start, two things, could we have a 15-minute side over there, please, for my session? And I'm also second, I have Judy Krasinski over there, who's a former English teacher that I taught with for many years, come up here and help me. Well, here's a story of lower seventh pod, where I taught. And if you ever had a child in lower seventh pod, then you understand this story. Every year around the end of October, pretty much almost every year, we would start getting complaints about too much homework. complaints about too much homework. And depending upon who the principal was at the time, there were these meetings, there were these concerns, there were these threats. And you know something? We ignored it. We really ignored it. And what we did is we tried to tell people, please be an Asian. Because you see, what happens in sixth grade, in sixth grade is the transition. And sixth grade, there's very little homework. And so really, the big question is, when do you start giving homework? When do things get more intense? How are you gonna prepare a student for high school? And we felt, and the issue was not mine because I don't like it, the textbook was horrible. In science, I used one chapter a year, a token chapter, and that was the end of it. So I didn't give busy work, I didn't give homework, but I sure gave tests and I sure had projects and I had labs. But we had problems in October and November. And then at the end of the year, just because I don't have too much time, the end of the year, I would say that, I'm gonna say a minimum of 95% of our parents were very happy with the education that their child had in seventh grade and that they no longer had that same concern about homework that they did have in October and November. In addition to that, which is another story, have you ever watched your child in their room doing homework? For some students, it takes maybe 20 minutes to do an assignment, for another student it might take four hours. What is going on in that room? So there's a lot of issues here. I would certainly like to stay, I'll stay here until 10 o'clock, I could talk to you about homework. But you know, in the end, it was never an issue for us and we were the pod that really gave probably the most homework.
Okay, well, now it's time for the candidates' closing statements. Now, my understanding is that they're one minute long. Is that yours?
I did it then.
All right, two minutes each. And reversing our order of opening statements, we'll begin with Clifford.
Hello. I'm Clifford Waldeck and I gotta tell you, I'm really happy. I loved being a Park School parent and meeting everybody and this whole new chapter of Mill Valley life is opening up to me. I love my day job, working in business development for a nationally recognized philanthropic company called Give Something Back. I'm grateful for the past opportunities to partner with many of the organizations and agencies that make the Bay Area so special. I've loved being part of ensuring Mill Valley will continue to be a great place to live, work, and raise a family. Let me share with you a little bit about how already I've been engaged with the school district. When I had my own company, Waldeck's Office Supplies, I was a Kidde classroom sponsor for several years. I just couldn't say no to Tricia Garland. While a member of the city council, we expanded the Mill Valley library, greatly bolstered the children's section. We talked about, you know, the building of the kid unity center and partnering with the Friends of the Fields to improve multipurpose fields in Mill Valley. In summary, I believe my skills and interests will augment those of our current board members. I promise to always arrive at meetings fully prepared to address the tasks at hand, keep open lines of communication, and to operate with utmost transparency. And I will strive tirelessly for a sustainable future for our kids, our school, and our community. I'm Clifford Waldeck, a proud Park School parent and would greatly appreciate one of your two votes on Election Day. Thank you.
Leslie.
Thank you for your time tonight and for the chance to speak with you about the future of our schools. My four children have greatly benefited from the Mill Valley's exceptional public schools and I want to ensure that all Mill Valley families will have that same opportunity. I am running for the Mill Valley School Board because quite frankly, I've worked too hard over the last 20 years to stand by as the state of California and economic downturn threaten to dismantle our educational successes. I am invested in this community and invested in the excellence of public schools. I am honored and proud to be endorsed by each of the current Mill Valley School District Board Trustees and many former board members, every Mill Valley School District Superintendent dating back to 1993, the Tamalpais Union High School District Superintendent Lori Kimbrow, and all current Tamalpais Union High School District Trustees, the current Tam High Principal and both Assistant Principals, the current and six former Kidde Chairs, including myself, all members of the current city council and several former mayors, two county supervisors, numerous educators and school principals, and over 500 members of our community. With your support on Election Day, I will bring my passion and perspective, my relationships and my resources, and my 20 years of experience as an educational advocate to work for our children and our schools. Please visit my website at www.lesleywaltel.com for more information. And please vote for me for Mill Valley School District Board of Trustees. Thank you all so much for coming out on a Monday night and thank you to Mari and Lisa from the PTA Council for organizing this forum and to the Legal Women Voters for moderating.
Bob.
Well, hopefully, I'm endorsed by the 2,500 students and their parents that I had these last 19 years at Mill Valley Middle School. Please consider the following. Isn't it reasonable to believe a former experienced Mill Valley teacher would be an excellent candidate for the school board? In other words, will a former teacher be able to offer a different perspective when important decisions involving children have to be made? Every year for 42 years, I've had over 100 students that have entered my class at the beginning of the year with their own set of anxieties and problems. Every year, I have had the parents of these students with their own set of concerns. That is the definition of experience. For those of you that are not familiar with me, may I suggest that you talk with my former students and parents of these students to verify my skills as a teacher and as a communicator? I believe they will tell you I have the experience, knowledge, and insight to make intelligent decisions as a member of the school board. The Mill Valley community must decide what type of schools they want in the future. If the funding problems persist, there's gonna be a negative impact even in Mill Valley. We're gonna have to be creative. Kidde is an example of a creative idea that was not universally embraced by the community when it first evolved. Can you imagine the state of the schools today without Kidde? I am confident that if I become a board member, that I will be able to work with the other board members to solve these problems and to ensure that Mill Valley schools continue to be outstanding. I would appreciate your confidence and support. Thank you.
And that ends our debate. Thanks to the panelists for presenting themselves as candidates and to the Mill Valley PTA Council for sponsoring the debate. And thanks to Sandy for time to be. If I can ask for just another minute of your patience, I do have some announcements. Election Day is Tuesday, November 8th. The last day to register or re-register, if you moved since you last voted, is Monday, October 24th. Watch for your sample ballot, which will be mailed September 29th. It has an absentee ballot application and information on voting procedures. Requests for absentee ballots must be received by Elections Department by November 1st, one week before the election. For voting by mail, ballots must arrive by Election Day and postmarks do not count. Early voting in Room 2121 at the Civic Center begins October 10th. The best place online to do your election homework is the election website of Legal Women Voters of California, smartvoter.org. Using your street address and zip code will bring up your ballot with informations about those candidates if they've accepted Smart Voter's invitation to submit their information. There's also information on ballot measures and other voter-related issues. More information, including this debate, can be found on the Marin League website, marinlwv.org, and the Community Media Center of Marin website, cmcm.tv. Thanks for coming tonight, you've been a great audience.